Okay, I'll go ahead and open this meeting up Shelby County Supervisors this Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023. Do you guys have any conflicts of interest on the agenda today?
None.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion second.
Motion by Charlie, second by Bryce. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Approval of minutes of May 16th. Any changes or corrections to that mark?
No.
Have a motion to approve the minutes as presented then?
Motion second.
Motion by Bryce, second by Charlie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. At this time, could I have a motion to recess our regular meeting and open up the public hearing?
Motion second.
Motion by Charlie, second by Bryce. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Regular meeting is recessed, open up the public hearing for Shelby County Board of Supervisors declaring EMS services an essential service in consideration of tax levy and income surtax to finance a service in the future or vote in November. At this time, this is the first of three meetings. And first I'll have the Advisory Committee give a little update. And if you know, we talked earlier, you don't have any handouts, but in the future, make sure you have handouts and how it's going to affect taxes. And then I'll have you guys give your update presentation. And then we'll open it up to the public for comments. And the comments will be restricted to three minutes or around that timeframe. I don't think we're gonna have a ton of people here today since we're gonna have three of them. But, okay. You guys wanna start and introduce yourself? Just go up my podium here.
Yeah. So, my name's Alex Londo, EMA Coordinator. Been working on this for, since about a year and a half now and we're at this point. So, as we talked at the previous meeting where we had said, or requested the levy, it was gonna be 75 cents per thousand dollars of house valuation or property valuation. And then a 1% income surtax. That money will be used to support a new department in the county. And that will be a 24 by 7 staffed ambulance service that will respond to calls within the county. And we're gonna, with this, these dollars, we're planning on having two crews staffed 24/7. So, we'll have two ambulances available at all times. Again, just as a reminder, the reason we're doing all of this is because our existing contracted ambulance providers talking about retiring and we won't have that coverage anymore. And we want to make sure that we keep that existing. And then on top of that, we wanna make sure that we're supporting volunteers, all the volunteer departments with some funding so that they don't have to flip pancakes to be able to respond to medical calls. And that funding is also built into this tax to where-
Because this will be a county-wide ambulance.
Correct. Yep, we're gonna, it'll all, all volunteer departments and the new department at the county will all be funded out of this source. And yeah, we're, we're, everything that we approve at the Advisory Council, we're gonna be putting onto the website, the county website. And there's a tab under there that says EMS Advisory Council. And it'll have like the Iowa Code section that says what we have to do for this. And any handouts that we have, any minutes from the meetings. And then we're gonna have a frequently asked questions sheet that covers how much it could impact a home, like a hundred thousand dollar house.
Okay, I was gonna ask you about land, business.
Yeah, that'll, that'll be built into there. And then there's also some other questions of, you know, just what, what is EMS? What are we gonna do? That kind of stuff will be on there. And I think it's, it's done. We just need to put it back up there. So.
Alex, just for education wise, was it a couple of years ago the state passed to allow counties to vote on implementing essential service for ambulance?
Yes.
In how many counties? Because, one, this is not just Shelby County problem. It's a state, national problem. And the state has recognized that. And so, they're allowing things like this to give the public an option.
Correct. Yeah, this has been a big topic for several years. And I believe it was in 2021, the state approved the bill to allow essential service funding or tax dollars to be used towards EMS. They decided to do it at the county, let the counties make the decision instead of the state mandating that you will tax for this. So, that's why you have to go through this resolution process. For this to pass, it needs to have a 60% vote of yes, to be in favor of it after you guys declare it as a resolution. And then it'll have to be re-voted on, and I believe it's 15 years. But yeah, there was, last year, there was eight counties that, that went for the vote. And I believe five of them passed. Most of them, just, the ones that didn't pass, in following up with them, a lot of them didn't get the word out to public enough. So, they didn't, there wasn't a lot of public knowledge on it. So, it's something we're trying to, to fix. And I know we went up to the EMA Conference and there's several counties that are also working on this. I'm gonna say at least another six that are in various processes of doing this.
Yeah, because you can't just decide in April you're gonna do it in November. There's, there's a litany of restrictions and notices that have to be done.
Yeah, and there's, the funding can be used for various different things that this, this new tack or this tax would generate. And I've seen everything from people doing similar to what we're doing to just funding another private contractor that they have to just funding the volunteers and letting them manage the money. The reason that the Advisory Council went with this route is because it gives a lot more public input into what the department could be because it would be no different than the Sheriff's Department or Secretary Rhodes. It would all be managed at the county level, which is, it's gonna be a county tax, be managed there. And then on top of that, we already have a contractor and with the costs that we've gotten from different agencies running it, like another private contract, yeah. It makes fiscal sense to just do it yourself because then you have the oversight of it. And that's about all I have. So.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm Tim Plum, Irwin Fire, and I'm on the Advisory Council. I don't really think this is something that we need for Shelby County, especially with the dwindling numbers of volunteers that are not stepping up to volunteer on the departments. You know, we started in Irwin. Back when I joined 26 years ago, we had 16, 18 members. Now, we're down to four, who all work out of town during the day. So, it's hit and miss with our, our community. And I think by having something that's staffed 24/7 in the county, it benefits every, every department, helps them out. I think we've, with the plan that we've come up and are going set forward, I think it's the best value for the taxpayers of Shelby County. And it's-
Tim, do you see that what's happened in Irwin, same with all the other-
Yes. It's not just a county-wide deal. It's a statewide deal. It's amongst several states. Nebraska really has a problem.
With the volunteers.
Yep. They're all, everybody's the volunteers. People aren't just stepping up anymore like they used to.
So, do your volunteers better able to respond in the evenings versus when you're working?
Yes. Most of the time that we struggle is during the day, the hours where people are at work.
Okay.
And there's a lot of training that goes along with being an EMT.
Yeah, an EMT.
I mean, it's, it's a big commitment.
The course is a self-act, 140 hours. There's a cost to it. It's about, I think it's up to about 1,200 bucks for per student now. That's the money that I come up with. And to get somebody to go through it, then they gotta do clinical time and 24 hours every two years of continuing education.
So, if we went ahead and had a private like Medevac here decades ago, we've been looking at this a lot sooner.
Yep. And I don't think subbing it out to anybody else would be the answer either for the, the value you're carrying, you're gonna get for your people in Shelby County. That's pretty much all I have.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks for serving on the board too. Do you guys have any questions for those two guys? At this time, I'll open it up to the public. Again, welcome to address the board, for or against. I'm trying to limit it to three minutes. We're not going to hold you exactly to that. So, at this time, anybody would like to comment? Come on up, Larry.
Well, thank you for having the meeting. And I think-
Did you state your name?
Larry Madsen. President of Shelby County. Earl Corley is what I call myself.
Okay.
I, I think this is something that does need to be addressed because as Monroe Township trustee, we deal with Walnut, Fire Department, and ambulance service. Same thing with Elkhorn and Harlan. And it definitely is getting to be harder to get bolder to come. The question that keeps coming to me is what do we do if we county-wide tax? And the people on the periphery, an example, one individual I talked to over southeast of, or southwest of Elkhorn said they are actually closer to Marty, Elkhorn, or Atlantic. So, do I understand that some of the funds will be distributed to some of these other-
They'll be distributed, do I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, to be distributed to the communities within Shelby County because it's a Shelby County tax?
Okay.
Is that correct?
So, people like Walnut, Avoca would, in other words, the question that was brought forth was if we're paying a county tax, but like one individual was two miles from Walnut, they will be billed from Walnut. And I recognize there could be some time that Walnut may have to cover Harlan. Harlan may have to cover Walnut. I recognize that. Statistically, you look at it and say, most of the time, he's gonna be covered by, by Walnut. Has there been anything discussed or worked out in situations like that where you're right on the board of the county because we have, well, it'd be Portsmouth, there'd be a number of towns that would have, be paid the tax, but would be closer to-
Sure. And you're gonna have that all the way around. You wanna address that, Alex? I don't know how that all works.
Yeah, what we had, what we talked about was, there's really-
What you going to-
You wanna come up here? What we had, what we had talked about was a couple of things. So, first, to have all of the surrounding towns be covered by this also would greatly lessen the amount of money that we were able to give to the volunteers per department. And with, our main concern is making sure there's a guaranteed response. And right now, we don't, the only guaranteed response we have right now is Medevac. So, if, like the gentleman said, if Walnut were to not have a volunteer during the day and they had to have somebody come, we wanna make sure that we have the ability to have somebody come. And then vice versa, if, you know, there's nothing to say that if Potawatomi County imposed an EMS tax, it would only be for the people in Potawatomi County. And then the people in Shelby County wouldn't have to pay for the same. So, it's, we're kind of starting the patchwork of a lot of, because I know a lot of counties are gonna be going to this. And there, there's no way to really include everybody without lessening what we have here in the pot. So, we're gonna help Pot County, once they go for their tax, to also get taxed for the same service and be able to make sure that provide a guaranteed staffed ambulance to anybody inside the county or, you know, that's serviced by somebody from outside the county.
Okay. So, more or less saying it's gonna stay for now. Then what happened like if, say Walnut, for example, that's Pot County, correct? So, if they could pass theirs, then you could work out some kind of, I don't know, sharing agreement?
Yeah, the sharing agreement. And we also have the Emergency Services Association, which is members of anybody who has service territory inside of Shelby County. And there is potential to, you know, if there's excess revenues, can we give some money to these other departments since they didn't receive any, or, you know, whatever the case is. And when I say revenues, I don't mean tax revenues. I mean billing revenues. But that, you know, the surrounding counties are, or surrounding agencies outside of the county are a part of that agency as well. So, yeah, we're, there's, right now, there's no plan, I guess, to answer the question, to distribute the funds to the surrounding towns. But that's obviously something that could change in the future.
Have you or could you reach out to, I mean, I'm gonna say like Carroll or Wright County? You already have something in place? See what, if they do anything, or do you know that answer?
Yeah, we've reached out to them and every, every county that we've talked to keeps the money within the county and it funds their county. Now, it's, it just so happens that it doesn't matter where you're at. Sometimes lines bleed over into other counties. And kind of, the example that was given to me was if you're in Council Bluffs and going shopping and you have a heart attack and Council Bluffs Fire comes and picks you up and takes you to the hospital, well, you didn't have to pay a tax to, to cover for that ambulance, right? And it's very similar now. It might be a little different situation because these people live there and their primary agency is somebody that's outside of the county. But the thing that we're trying to focus on is we wanna make sure there's a guaranteed response from somebody inside the county.
Marcus, is there any legalities to that for the money going out that you know?
Well, I think it may not be as much legality as there is, you know, the fact that Shelby County residents are taxed for it and they're given a guarantee by the tax that they're gonna have service. That's really what we're looking at. And when you start to expand that area, you kinda get into a slippery slope situation that, you know, where does it, where does it end? And so, I mean, I think this is the most practical way to look at it.
Until other counties of borderists get on board.
Yeah. And inevitably, I think they will.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Larry, you have any questions or any other questions to that?
I guess the question would be, where are some of the other counties at? Do you, do you see this progressing in all the other counties or have you got any information in that direction?
I know, I have not heard anything from Potawatomi County, but like Ottoman County and Harrison County have both started the process and are kinda looking at it. As far as Carroll, which is just the little corner of our northeast corner of Wright County and Crawford, I have not heard from them on where they stand on it.
Okay. The fire districts and the ambulance service districts will be different. They're completely different because not all fire districts have ambulance service.
Well, and not only that, the districts are, the fire districts are set by the townships and the ambulance districts are set by a different board, generally by the association or an annual one board. So, when it, when it makes sense, we try to keep them as close to the fire districts as we can just because it's easier to do it that way. But there are some times where you might have Walnut Fire coming, but you have Elkhorn Rescue or something like that. So, it kinda varies throughout.
That was my question. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Know how that works? Thank you. Thanks, Larry.
Thank you, guys.
Anybody else? Anybody? We will have two more meetings coming up. Mark, could you, don't mean to put you on the spot. Do you remember those dates?
June 6th, June 13th. And June 6th, it'll be a regular meeting at 9 o'clock. Then if we get done, we will recess and start the next hearing at 10 o'clock.
So, all hearings will be at 10 o'clock?
That's correct. There'll be a regular meeting before the hearing or we'll stop, recess the regular meeting on the 6th if we have to.
And please, if you have any questions or you hear some things out there, please reach out to-
Call my office, the auditor's office.
Or the Advisory Council. Because again, the shareholders group of the county EMS have all come together, formed advisory committee, and they've come to our board asking, could we make this an essential service in the county? So, as county supervisors, we're giving everybody in the county an opportunity to vote on this. You're gonna decide, do you wanna have ambulance? You know, like I said, when you press 911, you expect it to be there in a few minutes. Do you want that continue to happen? When we know Medevac is going away here soon, they wanna retire? Or I know there's a county next to us who, the volunteers are almost non-existent and they have to wait 45 minutes to an hour for ambulances to come out of the city. So, I guess that's a choice that people of the county will have to make. So, and that vote would be November 7th.
7th.
Okay. Yeah, next meeting, if you could have handouts and with, might draw off some more questions for people. And then are you working with like the newspaper, radio station, getting information out?
Yeah, so the, we're working with the newspaper, the radio stations, and then we're also doing some social media stuff. And then we've also worked with the high school about getting some advertising materials just to kinda get what we're doing out because they had a marketing class that did a lot of it for us. So, we're gonna be putting all of those up. And then the hospital also has been helping with their marketing department to get flyers put up and things like that. So, we're gonna be making a trip to all the fire departments, to all the city councils and everywhere, just letting them know this is what we're, you know, the Advisory Council's recommending, this is what the board's doing and what the service will provide. And everything that we get that we hand out will again be on the website. So.
And vote on November 7th.
Okay. And then, I was gonna ask you this before I've got Tim. All the other volunteer units, they seem to be on board. You've had discussions with them. They've had input to the process.
We've held a few meetings where they've had, gave us their input and it's, I mean, it's gonna be a give and take type of deal, but we're-
It must change.
Yep.
It would be changed if it's voted in.
And so, we're in conjunction, we're gonna go out to the, some of those that haven't shown up to some of our meetings. We're gonna go out and meet with them and get everybody up to date on what's going on.
Do you, do you foresee any, having any public hearings out around the county before the vote?
We've talked about having some town halls when it gets closer to the vote.
Okay. Okay. Anything else I'm, we're missing? I'm just trying to be as informative, transparent as we can here. Do you have anything to add, Marcus? You've been a great help, helping us get through the guidelines here.
Can I make one more comment, Steve?
Sure.
As a member of Irwin Fire Rescue, Manella sits just right to the north of us and Crawford County runs their ambulance service out of their hospitals. And about a year ago, I know the guys up on Manella quite well and they've asked us to cover for them a lot of times because they're covering for the hospital, crew that comes out of the hospital. They, they put them up on defiant, or it was Manella and Dow City. They put them up on first call. So, if anything happens in the county because the county ambulance is out on a transfer. And, you know, when we do, when they call us and say, hey, just giving you a heads up, we might, if we have something in our neck of the woods, you might be called up here. But there's never been any tax money that's gone back and forth in any of that. So, it's just a, a department deal that we work with each other and-
Sure.
Cover each other.
Okay. Thank you. Again, everybody that's on your advisory committee and has been part of the Shirley group, I appreciate the time because I know it's, like I said, it's been about a year and a half. You're eating, meeting early mornings and stuff and it's all volunteer to try to get it right here in the county. So, I really, and I know this board does really appreciates that. So, we'll continue to move forward. So. Last call. Anybody else like to speak today? Again, we'll be having, the next meeting will be June 6th, at 10 o'clock here. Okay? Do I have a motion to close the hearing then?
Motion.
Motion by Charlie, second by Bryce. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Now, it's Resolution 2023-29, consideration declaring emergency medical services an essential service, also appointing a permanent EMS Advisory Council, which we already have done. But at our last hearing, when we would finalize and approve this, then if, if you guys have any changes or somebody, you know, is taking a place of somebody else, bring that to us and then we would finalize that advisory committee. Okay? So, that's why that's in there. Okay? And then the ballot information. And then if anybody wants to read the ballot information, Mark, if you get that to them and, and Mark will also have it.
This will be proposed. It can't be formalized until-
It's approved.
Yeah.
Okay. But-
It'll be announced.
A draft is in Mark's office and if you could get that to you guys so you could get it out there so people know what they're voting on. Okay? By law, we have to vote on this after every public hearing. The final one is the one that counts. Okay? So, we're more or less saying here, if we approve it today, we want us to continue to move forward. Okay? Just so everybody understands. Okay. So, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2023-29?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Bryce, second by Charlie. You guys have any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay. Thanks, everybody, for coming today. You're welcome to leave if you came just for that. And we'll continue on with our business meeting here. So, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks for volunteering.
Thank you.
Hey, would it be possible for me to get a copy of this?
Sure.
Since we'll be having a current charter meeting before the June.
How do I get it to you?
Mail it?
Thank you.
I'll write it down. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda, tractor lease Shelby County Fair Board. What we have here is the Fair Board's reached out to me. They're working with Van Wall Implement Out of Dennison. Van Wall would supply a brand-new tractor for the racetrack to use up there from like now when they're using, when racetrack season starts till the middle of October. The county's with the requirement, what they would need is us to sign a lease for a dollar and more or less donating it. The Fair Board is responsible for insurance. They're responsible that they cannot put over 200 hours on it and that it stays in like new condition. It's really, as Darren, I talked to Darren Goshorn, he said the Fair Board themselves are very good with the arrangement. Marcus has looked it over and they appreciate the opportunity Van Wall has given to them. So, they do have something available for them during that racetrack time.
Yeah, the only comment that I would have is that there should probably, the Fair Board should probably also be a signatory on that lease. So, that they're bound by those insurance and, and hours and all that type of stuff. So.
Okay. Okay. Yep. We'll make sure that happens when, I'll get back to Darren and let him know that. Okay? You guys have any questions on that?
I think it's a free deal.
Yeah, it is. Hopefully, it works out well this year. They will continue that. I guess Van Wall has, or not has, presently already does that with some other county-run racetracks. So, okay? So, do I have a motion to approve the lease for a dollar for the tractor rental down at the, or down at the racetrack?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Charlie, second by Bryce. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. And I will get back to Darren and let him know about getting us a lease. Okay? Last on the agenda, set 2023 budget amendment hearing dates. We approved 2023 budget amendments last meeting. There was three or four oversights that just came up and we need to get these approved. But we need to get, we need to get the, yeah, hearing dates set. So, Mark?
Yeah. Trying to explain. The medical examiner department, it's required to pay for state medical examiner autopsies for Shelby County residents. And the amount of this year's has went up more than $12,000 over the largest amount ever spent in Shelby County.
What was the budgeted amount?
$30,000.
Wow, that's a huge increase.
But the largest ever spent was like 25. So, we always try and budget just a little more just to cover for emergencies such as this. Medical examiner didn't bill us and we don't know what's coming. Didn't bill us until April, right after this meeting that we just had, the last one. And we got $13,000 in bills. And so, it blew the budget open. One of the first years I started, we were budgeting $15,000 or $20,000. And we went over by like $3,000 we had to amend that year. So, I raised it to $30,000. The following year, we only spent $12,000 in autopsies. The next year was $17,000. And this year it goes up, it doubles to $35,000.
And this is state autopsy?
Yeah, we have to pay this. It's a state code. So, we just got stuck with that one. And then there's an accrued payment that was made in July that's on this year's books. And I've talked to other auditors, the, our private auditors that do our books said, they were kinda wishy-washy about- were kind of wishy-washy about it, just wait and see what comes down the pipe, and they'd rule on it later. And so it's just wise, not talking to other county auditors, they said, just amend.
Remand.
Just do it, and they're safe. And the money's there and everything, and also, net income, back to the autopsies, the income is also up this year, because if a resident of another county passes in Shelby County, and they have to go to the state medical examiner to perform the autopsy, we have to pay for it. But then, we check the residents, and we bill the other county back for it. And we have billed back over $6,000, or over $5,000, and there's only a $900 difference, actually, for what we brought. We brought in almost enough to cover those extra autopsies, but not enough, and we still have to amend the expenditure. It, it gets pretty involved. And also, the IT department, we just need to amend that to cover salaries.
And to have some capital.
Expenses, there's some capital in there that they, they've got, they own, they've got the spare change in there to cover that capital that went over.
And you said you have the money in there to cover this?
And there's, I went through on this budget amendment, you can see on the top half up there, just went through a few departments and that under budgeted the revenues. And they've made more money than what they thought they were gonna do, brought in more money. So I just put that on the amendment too, to demonstrate that there are departments that bring in more than they thought, just like there are departments that get caught, for lack of better terms, get caught overspending, and we have to amend to keep things right. And so after going through three or four departments that under budgeted their revenues, it's a positive amendment of $17,000.
Yeah, just seeing that. So about $49,000 in revenues, 32 in expenses.
Yes.
710 positive.
And I stopped looking for more excess revenues, because some of them are hard to judge until the middle of June.
Okay.
You know, election, we had special elections, so we had some revenues coming back in there.
So what was you thinking on the date here, Mark?
Uh, 20th of June. That's a regular meeting, I believe.
Yeah, okay. You guys have any other questions on the amendments?
No.
Okay. Appreciate you catching those. Do I have a motion to approve the hearing for the 2023 budget amendment?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Bryce, second by Charlie, for June 20th amendment hearing date. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Do I have anything else, Mark?
That is it.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thanks, everybody, for meeting adjourned.